Hello, everyone. I'm Town Manager Kevin Mizikar. And we're joining you today on SMC to take some time to review the entire annual town meeting warrant with you. It is our goal through this pre-recorded video that we are getting you up to speed as town meeting members and other members that are interested in the community about what we have on the annual town meeting warrant. And trying to take this opportunity to reduce the amount of proactive presentation time the town staff will have to utilize at the town meeting itself. So, everyone knows it's been a strange few months related to the circumstances of COVID-19. And town meeting has been delayed from May and has now been rescheduled to August 8th at 8:30 in the morning in front of the Oak Middle School. And town meeting, we have 240 town meeting members and obviously staff that support, so it's quite a large gathering and exceeds the total gathering that's actually allowed within the Commonwealth right now. However, legislative bodies are exempt to be able to conduct the business of the municipality and other entities across the state. So, while we're exempt from that gathering total limitation, we're certainly not exempt from the virus. So, our ability to diligently conduct the business of the town and do it as safe and expeditiously as possible is really important. So, that's the focus of these different segments as we'll walk through all 41 warrant articles with you. It's to get you up to speed, have you better informed before you walk into the tent that will be set up at the Oak Middle School, hopefully reduce the overall time while we're onsite and get through the business of the town appropriately so we can continue to operate. That being said, staff will be on hand to be able to answer any questions that anyone has, whether we don't include them in this presentation or we need to further clarify whatever it is. We are here to make sure the town meeting members are informed and can make the right decisions on the operation of the town from this point in the fiscal year forward. So, we've decided to break the 41 articles up into different categories and we've grouped them into different functional areas or types of articles like financial articles and bylaw articles, et cetera. So, with our first segment that we'll get rolling on here at the start, I'm joined by Assistant Town Manager Kristin Lass. And we are going to go through 15 different warrant articles related to operating budgets for fiscal year 21, which started July 1st. And without further ado, I'll turn it over to Kristin for a little introduction and we'll get started.
Kristin Lass, the Assistant Town Manager, and happy to be with you today. It's Wednesday, July 22nd, and we also look forward to having the public hearings with the Finance Committee this evening, as well as continuing to tomorrow evening, Thursday, July 23rd. Before I get started to ask you a few questions about the financial articles of the town meeting warrant, could you talk a little bit about why the warrant looks a little bit different in structure? We don't have the traditional articles in the traditional format. So, could you just go through that for town meeting members?
Sure. Thanks for the question. So, we have definitely structured the warrant, I think, in, with a clear distinction. And we attempted to put warrant articles that were absolutely critical for the operation of the town. You know, we really started to lay out a different look to the warrant, geez, it was way back in probably the beginning of the May, which seems like a lifetime ago. And we really didn't know at that time when or how we were going to have town meeting. We knew the virus was going to impact the timing. We needed more information for the financials. So, we structured it so that if for some reason we weren't able to get through all 41 warrant articles, we knew that the most important, critical warrant articles related to the core operations of the town could be handled in expeditious matters. So, mainly the financial warrant articles come in the first segment of the meeting and then the second half of the meeting includes non-financial-related articles that are very critical for our operations, but you know, we could do without them if absolutely, if we absolutely had to.
Great. Thank you. That's so important for those who have been town meeting members for several years or a long time. It may not be so relevant to those who are newly-elected town meeting members, so that's great information. So, we'll start off with Article Number One. This is the fiscal year 20 transfers. Can you talk a little bit about if there are any transfers related to our fiscal year 20 budget?
Sure. Yep. Fiscal year 20, it's unique because we're normally not done with it, the fiscal year, when we start the new, or when we're at town meeting. So, there are actually no transfers that are required. We've closed out fiscal year 20 officially on June 30th and with our financials on July 15th, so we will look to defeat this motion.
Great. Article Two is our fiscal year 21 operating budget. I know you and the staff here at Town Hall, the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen have been pivoting quite a bit related to the fiscal 21 budget. We were in this room in early March with public hearings related to the fiscal 21 budget, and that has changed quite a bit with the COVID pandemic. It looks a little bit different than it did last year for fiscal 20. So, would you like to walk us through this fiscal 21 budget? And we understand that the school committee is going to be doing a separate presentation for SMC viewers and town meeting viewers specifically rated, related to the school department operating budget.
Sure. Thank you. So, yeah, this is the operating budget for fiscal year 21, so it's really one of the most critical articles that are on every annual town meeting warrant. And this sets the real policies of the town through how we're going to spend our funds. So, the operating budget looks, you know, really different than it, than it did in March when we were at the Finance Committee. But first, I wanted to point out to town meeting members, we're really trying to take a segmented approach for the, for our overall financials for fiscal year 21. There's a lot of questions about the cost of COVID and how we're going to reopen, how schools are going to reopen. And those extraordinary costs related to COVID are, for the most part, set aside and outside of the budget. They are being funded, hopefully in its entirety. If not, we'll have to make some decisions in the future about more local funds. But they are being funded through intergovernmental funds coming in from the state and the federal government to help us with those extraordinary, non-recurring costs that are just related to the response, opening additional measures that we have to take to protect the town and preserve our operations. So, we're going to set those aside and we're really just going to pretend like we're focused on the normal operations. Now, you'll hear a little bit of different conversation from the school because they have much more unique costs related to COVID than the town does, and it'll be integral, more integral in their operations because their operations will be much more changed than the town. But if I can draw a bright line, there's a distinction between COVID-related response and, and general operations, and we're going to focus on general operations. So, that being said, everyone knows that the global economy has been significantly impacted. And unfortunately, the town of Shrewsbury is a part, maybe a small part, but still a part of it. So, we have now set a budget that is about $2.1 million less than we had originally talked about in March with the Finance Committee. And that includes, so that's $124,024,635 spending plan for the year. Within that includes funding for the school department. And the school department funding is $67,080,000. Certainly not what the superintendent and his team had hoped for, but it's, you know, it's part of the reality that we're dealing with since we had to reduce the budget. So, within the town aspect of, of these operations, I want to take an opportunity to kind of highlight significant changes. And first and foremost, changes to departmental budgets where there are going to be less full-time equivalents or less employees, where we've had to cut positions either they're in their entirety or partially to fit within that $2.1 million reduction. So, starting with the Personnel Board budget, the Personnel Board has been deliberating. And my recommendation to the Personnel Board is that all non-union wages be frozen until October 1st. All department head wages be frozen for the entire fiscal year. And all non-department heads potentially be eligible to receive a 1% increase effective October 1st and allow any other wage adjustments because of longevity or whatever it is to occur on October 1st as well. So, with the Personnel Board's budget, it's been significantly reduced, cut by, cut almost in half from what we had originally proposed to the Finance Committee in Fiscal Projection I, or actually it was cut by about $100,000 from 261 to 167,000. So, that impacts a lot of different employees, so wages have been frozen for the most part. I also want to thank five of the six unions who've come and negotiated with the town and provided concessions. And their concessions have allowed us to retain higher staff and service levels across the board because of those concessions. You know, the police, the fire, the police superiors, the Public Works and the custodial unions have all provided significant and meaningful concessions as to what was originally contracted for, and I can't thank them for their support enough because it's so meaningful to develop a budget that we can still provide great services to the community. Moving on with regards to other personnel reductions, there's a 25% FTE or a quarter of a year reduction within the Town Manager's Office for the Management Analyst. There's a 50% reduction of a part-time position within the Treasure Collector's Office. Within the Public Buildings Department, there's a one full-time equivalent or one full-time employee position reduction within public buildings for an HVAC position. Within the Police Department, there's a half a year reduction or a .5 FTE reduction for an administrative clerk. There's an equivalent of one and a half full-time patrol officer positions that have been, that are not funded in this budget. We plan to handle that by hiring, delaying the hiring of three patrol officers until January 1st. We've had a significant, not a significant, we've had several individuals retire from the departments, so we're just not backfilling those positions until halfway through the fiscal year. It is a service level impact and will reduce our staffing levels. Within the Highway Department, we are, there's a quarter of a position that has not been funded, so we will delay the hiring of a heavy equipment operator until at least October 1st. And then within the Library, there is hourly decreases for part-time staff. Obviously, the library's still not open. We're hoping that when we are able to open, that it doesn't impact our service levels, but we have not been able to fund those positions for the full year. So, folks may think that that doesn't sound significant because if we get to the end of the fiscal year, everything seems pretty consistent to where we started the year with full-time equivalents, and that's true. But the challenge that really exists is finding those additional funds at the start of the next fiscal year because, you know, in, in order to get a, you know, if we're going to hire those employees partway through the year, we need to find full-year funding for them next year. That's really going to stress the budget and be a challenge for us. So, very generally speaking, beyond those personnel decreases, town departments in aggregate have been reduced, have their spending reduced from Fiscal Projection I about 2.6%. The operating and debt, debt service, debt service set aside, that's an obligation of the town, we're required to fund that as it was originally proposed. That's about a $13 million total number. Within the operating support, which are line items that support both the town and schools, that's a, that's a $15.9 million item. We've reduced that budget category by about $100,000. I already mentioned the schools. We've reduced that funding that was originally proposed by $888,000, which is a 1.31% reduction from our original proposal in March that we took to the Finance Committee. In total, we've also reduced funding for our pension system and our OPEB contributions as a town. $350,000 less funding for the pension system and $50,000 less in OPEB. We've reallocated those funds. $300,000 of the pension funding went over to offset some of the reductions within the school department. And the other $100,000 offset some of the reductions within the town. So, with, with regards to other nuances within town departments, reductions really range from about 3.5 to a little less than 1%. So, we've really taken an across-the-board approach to not have any significant service reductions in any department. However, you know, I highlighted some full-time equivalent employees that we were not able to fund for the full year or had to reduce ours. So, it was, it was, it felt like a challenging fiscal year to start with when we went to the Finance Committee in March, and it got even harder before we got to the end of March. And unfortunately, we're going to wind up with a budget, although it is balanced, it will provide, will, will spend about $2.1 million less than we had originally planned to. I didn't want to get into a lot of nuances on the, on the revenue model, but I do want to tell folks that we had to reduce revenues across the board in every category, which is why we had to reduce our spending. In addition to that, we had originally planned to put $835,000 into the town's rainy day fund or our stabilization account. And in lieu of doing that, since we are in very challenging and emergency times when we need to rely upon our stabilization account to balance things out as much as possible or buoy us to the extent that it can, instead of putting that money into stabilization funds, we're going to use that within the operating budget again to reduce the number of reductions that we have to make to service levels. So, not only is it going to be a challenge to fund these additional positions at the start of next fiscal year, if we don't want to use free cash within the operating budget to a great extent, we're going to have to find another $835,000 that's coming in from free cash this year to, to support that budget. So, that's a very high-level overview. I do want to follow up on the Assistant Manager's comment that we'll be going through the budget in great detail with the Finance Committee to highlight these changes at their hearings, both this evening, July 22nd, and tomorrow, July 23rd, as they review the entire warrant themselves. I think that's a fair overview of the changes that we've made to the budget, and we're ready to move on to a different article.
Great. Thank you. And just a reminder that town meeting packets most likely will be mailed out the middle of next week, which will be July 29th. You should see hitting your mailbox and you'll see the completed financial package within the town meeting booklet and Fiscal Projection II is posted to the website today. So, those who want to really get into the details and nitty-gritty can start to do so if they wish. I'm going to lump Articles Three and Four together. These are our traditional offsetting the tax levy by cable TV funds and light funds. Could you go through and make any comments of these are traditional articles and if the funding is the same as it was last year?
So, funding is consistent for Articles Three and Four. We utilize funding from Selco. You can call it a pilot payment, a payment in lieu of taxes, or just a contribution from the Selco Department that comes into the town. Article Three is an $800,000 contribution from Selco. And Article Four is a $237,569 contribution from Selco that is used just as a general revenue source, and it enables us to provide service levels that otherwise would have to be raised to the tax rate. So, this is a, a great revenue source that's the same as it has been in prior years.
Great. And then Article Five, again, is an offsetting the tax levy using free cash. So, can you describe how this may be the same or different from previous years?
Yeah. So, $500,000 is the same that's normally in this warrant article, and we utilize free cash in the operating budget, you know, whenever we make the direct appropriation, which will occur through Article Two this year, and then also through this article, which is Article Five, where 500,000 in additional free cash is used to really exactly reduce the tax rate by that value. And it just, you know, keeps the tax rate lower than it otherwise would have to be if we didn't utilize this funding.
Great. Going in sequential order, Article Six is again a traditional article to pay the medical expenses of retired disabled police officers and firefighters. And I see that we do have a charge this year, some years we do not. Can you explain a little bit about that charge this year?
Sure. This is the town's commitment to retire disabled police and firefighters and is done so in accordance with Chapter 41, Section 100B of the General Laws. And this is anytime those individuals who are disabled have to pay out-of-pocket medical expenses. It's a little higher than this year than it has been. It's $9,719, and that is raised through the tax rate.
Great. So, we'll hop forward to Article 14, which is the traditional fiscal 21 capital budget. And noting that this item has been significantly reduced related to COVID-like funding, I note that in fiscal 20, we were allocating $2.4 million for capital expenses and hoping through our planning that we would continue to be able to increase that. Can you talk a little bit about this year's fiscal year 21 capital plan and the reasons for the needed reductions?
Sure. So, the vast majority of our capital plan every year is funded utilizing free cash. And that's an appropriate use of those funds because technically they're one-time expenses and we're using a one-time revenue source, free cash, to fund them. Unfortunately, we're nowhere close to that $2.4 million that, that we spent last year. This proposed capital improvement plan is only 1.1 million, and it's significantly reduced to the almost 2 million that we originally proposed. The real reason that we reduced this was in acknowledgement of our additional use of free cash in the operating budget and not being able to contribute to the stabilization fund. It's really important that we maintain a reserve level and I don't, and, you know, financial reserves in case we have to call upon them in hard times. And over those boom periods of the last few years, that seemed like something that we'd never need again, and then bang, all of a sudden, the beginning of March, we are in a financial situation like we've never seen. So, really, we're preserving funds within our reserves and delaying capital investments through this plan. It is a $1.1 million plan, the largest expenditure. I think we're still doing everything that we need to do to, to make critical improvements to our facilities. The largest investment is a $500,000 investment from free cash to replace roof and air handling units at the Parker Road Preschool. And our second largest, no shock to any New Englander, is the replacement of a plow truck, which, you know, is, is not your standard pickup truck, it's a $240,000 dump truck, a plow and sander. So, those two investments alone make up just about three-quarters of the total plan. And then we continue to invest in other public infrastructure through this plan, some within parks and cemetery, some within the Engineering Division to prepare plans and make improvements to critical public infrastructure like roadways and Newton Pond Dam and Old Mill Dam. I think we'll continue to invest in the Police Department, replacing two Mark Cruisers rather than four. And then finally, we will continue to make the investment in electronic voter verification through poll pads. And this enables actually a more touchless environment for the public whenever they come in to vote early or at the polls, where we're not having to thumb through a paper copy of the book. We can move people more expeditiously through the line, especially early voters. So, that's a $29,000 investment that I think really enables our remote operations. It's not something that we envisioned for this. It was just a business operation upgrade, but it certainly will benefit us in the future. So, it's remained in the plan. Again, so the capital improvement plan's a $1.1 million investment. It's about half of what it would have originally been, but we're meeting the, the most critical needs across all town departments.
Great. Thank you. Article 15, again, is a traditional of setting the spending limits on revolving accounts. We have two revolving accounts, the Council on Aging Transportation Fund and the Donahue Rowing Center. If you could just make a few comments related to those fundings and if they are traditional as they have been in the past.
Yep. So, one is and one isn't. The Council on Aging Transportation Revolving Fund is set at its normal $75,000 level, and it's used just for that, for transportation purposes through the Council on Aging. The second account, which is the Donahue Rowing Center Fund or Account, is $300,000, and normally that's $250,000. But we need to make some additional capital improvements and investments in that property. So, we're seeking a higher spending authorization for those particular projects this year, and most likely in the future, it will return to a traditional $250,000 level. This is not additional funding that's being raised to the tax rate or through any other purposes. These are revolving accounts. So, whenever a user is charged a fee to use the Donahue Rowing Center, you know, whether that's for rental, the facility, or what have you, those funds are reinvested in that particular purpose, just like the funds that we receive for, for transportation purposes. Stay with that program.
Great. Article 16 goes to the fiscal year 21 PEG Access operating budget, and this is a little bit newer than those who may have seen it before due to some operational changes and separation that has occurred.
Sure. So, Article 16, yeah, is, it's the operating budget for PEG Access. SMC is everyone will be most familiar with the name. We started this in January 1st, 2019 of a more business separation between Selco and SMC. So, this is a $426,244 budget, which provides for the general operating needs of SMC throughout fiscal year 21.
Article 17 is to fund for counseling and educational services for families, specifically Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services. And they traditionally give a presentation at town meeting and before the Finance Committee. Can you speak a little bit about the $150,000 that will be looked to, transferred from free cash to SYFS?
Yep. I'd be happy to. So, Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services is, is a real partner agency of the town, and it provides for the physical, mental, and health well-being of individuals within the community. And it doesn't seem like that, you know, given the needs of today, not only pre-COVID but post-COVID, that, you know, we could ever fund them enough. This is a slight increase from last annual town meeting up to the $150,000 level, but really does match the total amount that we provided during fiscal year 20. We made an appropriation in the spring and one in the fall last year. So, this $150,000 will be utilized by SYSF for their counseling and education services to anyone who reaches out to them in the community through the course of the year. The town is just one funding source of SYSF, but we certainly rely upon them and their partnership. And just so everyone knows, some, you know, a lot of other towns in the area, this is an internal department, and I think this model where SYSF is their own private nonprofit and the town is a, is a significant funder of them is really the right model to use.
Great. Thank you. Article 18 is an article brought by the Selco Commission that they wish to ask for a borrowing authorization for a broadband plant. And I know the town of Shrewsbury received a AAA bond rating last summer, and Selco will be able to take advantage of that bond rating for this authorization. Can you talk about why this needs to go to town meeting versus just the Selco Commission and what the amount is for?
Sure. So, Selco has the opportunity to, they, they need outside approval for a borrowing authorization. So, when they're going to incur debt, they can seek it through a general nonprofit entity called EMWIC, which, you know, they're a part of and is a public power group within the state that can back them, or they can come, as they traditionally do, to town meeting and the taxpayers of Shrewsbury to provide authorization to borrow. Now, the rates from Selco, whether it's through the electric rates, or in this case, the cable side of the operations or the video side of the operations, those rates will pay back the debt. So, it's very common, you know, they're more similar to a private electric operation or cable operation, broadband internet service provider, so those entities take on debt, and Selco needs to take on debt. And this project is really exciting because they're going to be upgrading the cable infrastructure from the traditional COAX within the community to fiber. And, you know, it will be fiber to the home, and it will continue to make Shrewsbury one of the most desirable places to live, not only in the Commonwealth but in New England. It'll be fiber to, you know, every individual residence within the community over the course of a several-year project period. And they're seeking to borrow $15 million for this project. Selco's in a great financial position where that's about half of the total project cost, and they'll rely upon their own financial reserves, capital reserves, to make this investment. I think it's a prudent investment, not only, you know, the, every- I think it's a prudent investment, not only, you know, everyone here is cutting the cord, right? So, there's not a lot of cable subscribers or there's a significantly reduced number of cable subscribers. This helps keep a viable revenue stream for internet service coming into Selco as a business operation, and it really provides a higher quality of life for residents to be able to have access to fiber to their home within the community. What I'm most excited about is the benefits to the town. It allows us to be a smart city. It allows us to do the Internet of Things within the public domain and just be a much more accessible community with regards to our public infrastructure. So, again, they're seeking town meeting's vote and approval to incur debt, but they will be responsible for having rates sufficient to pay this debt back. There'll be no impact on the tax rate if this article is approved.
Great, thank you for that explanation. We'll turn to Article 19, which is the traditional Chapter 90 allocation related to improvements of our public ways where we receive state funding and then have to acknowledge that in order to do these types of projects. This year, we are already aware for fiscal '21 that we'll have $989,000 approximately in our funds. Can you talk a little bit about what that will be used for?
Sure. So, this is our annual general roadway improvement plan, and the town has over 135 miles, lane miles of roadway throughout the community. $989,000 doesn't provide sufficient funding, but it is the only source that we do because, the only source that we utilize to make improvements within public ways and, you know, resurface roadways, et cetera. So, this funding will be used for a variety of projects and will enable us to maintain roadway infrastructure and deal with some of the most dire conditions throughout the community.
Great. We'll turn to Article 20, which again is a traditional article. This is to transfer funds related to cemetery lots for the amount of $18,000.
Yep, very traditional article. It's just moving funds for the long-term care and improvement for the cemetery. One of the major initiatives that we have going on and started to plan for was the expansion of the Mountain View Cemetery, you know, a hot, kind of a hot topic within the community as we need to find additional room and are building a plan out. So, funds would be used potentially in the future for the improvement of that and the other, the existing Mountain View Cemetery facility. This $18,000 is coming out of the sale of Lots Account, which has $93,000 in it, so we have sufficient funds to do that and there's no impact on the tax rate to do this.
Turning to Article 21, this is again a traditional article where we have an item to pay bills of a prior fiscal year. Again, we're in a little bit different position because we're having a town meeting for fiscal '21 when we're already two months in, and I note that we may not have any bills of prior fiscal year because we are closing the books.
That is correct. We are in a good spot, no prior fiscal year bills, and so this article would be hopefully defeated by town meeting because we don't need to take action.
So, we'll finalize what we're calling Segment 1 related to really the financials. The last one I wanted to talk about was Article 39. Again, a traditional article where we ask to fund a portion for the Lake Quinzigamond Commission to deal with Lake Quinzigamond.
Sure. So, Lake Quinzigamond is a great asset of the community, and Lake Quinzigamond Commission is charged through a state statute for the management and maintenance of Lake Quinzigamond, and the town provides financial contributions primarily for invasive weed control and other lake quality, water quality management issues. One little change for this, as we're exploring the challenges of invasive weeds in Lake Quinzigamond and working with all residents within the watershed, we're providing $10,000 additional to Lake Quinzigamond Commission this year to begin eradicating invasive leaves, weeds within Newton Pond. And, you know, that's a body of water that is at the headwaters of Lake Quinzigamond and conceivably and actually, what happens in Jordan Pond, I'm sorry, Newton Pond flows into Lake Quinzigamond. So, we're gonna help deal with invasives within that body of water this year as well.
Great, thank you so much. I think that wraps up our traditional and new types of financial articles for town meetings. So, we will take a short break and then transition to the next segment that deals with the operating and capital budgets of our utilities.
Thank you. We're gonna take a couple minutes now to review the operating and capital improvement plan of our utilities. The town relies upon what's called enterprise funds or special revenue funds to bring in ratepayer revenue and dedicate those to the operations and maintenance of the infrastructure to our critical utilities. Our utilities are our solid waste program, our sewer operations, our water operations, and our stormwater operations and programs. So, I'm joined for this segment by the business manager of the Department of Public Works, David Snowden, and the Department of Public Works Director, Jeff Holland, and they will walk us through the details on these various Warren articles. So, Dave, I'll start with you. We'll start with Article 7 for fiscal year '21 operating budget for the solid waste program and operations. So, if you wouldn't mind walking us through how we spend the revenue that comes in for the program and some comparisons to the prior year, that'd be great.
Of course. Thank you, Kevin. This is a great format to be able to meet town meeting. Article 7 reviews the solid waste expenditures for the town. This enterprise fund deals with the collections of the town's solid waste and the recyclable materials. What we're seeing different in this year fiscal '21 than in previous years would be the addition of indirect charges for the solid waste account, and we're doing this as an effort to increase the transparency of all the expenditures that are necessary to support this enterprise as we did with the Water Enterprise last year. The revenue generated for this program is split between the tax levy and the pays-you-throw bag fees, which is the bulky waste stickers and the pays-you-throw bags. The revenue reflected in this projection is based on the new bag rate as of 7/1/2020. And those are the major items within this budget in Article 7.
Great, thanks, Dave. Let's turn now to Article 8, which is the operations, the operating budget for the sewer department. And if you wouldn't mind kind of walking us through the sewer department, just like you did for solid waste, and tell us what's on tap for operations for that, for this year.
Of course. The sewer budget here, typically we have salary expenditures in the one and three lines. The one would be split between the water and sewer accounts for our superintendent. And the salary three lines typically refer to the technical staff that are out in the field. Our contractual services throughout the sewer are pretty typical from year over year. And the one larger difference would be our 09 account, which the change year over year there is based on our flow rate changes with all our treatment plants going forward.
Great. So, operations there within the sewer department is about $6.3 million, and I guess, you know, one thing just overall with all these utility accounts, they're all balance accounts, so with the exception that Dave noted with using about 50% of the total revenue required from the tax levy for the solid waste program, these are all self-funded entities, so sewer funds itself, water funds itself, et cetera. So, at this point, I'd like to turn it over for Director Holland to talk a little bit about those new charges within the operating budget for the sewer department with regards to where our sewer flow is going to be going in fiscal year '21, and then if he'd also touch a little bit on our plans for capital improvements within the sewer department, which is found in Article 9.
Thanks, Kevin. So, as many of you know, our, we are doing the Route 20 Sewer Improvement Project, which will take a portion of our sewer that currently goes to Westboro, approximately 130,000 gallons on average per day, that currently goes to Westboro, will now be reallocated to the City of Worcester through to their Upper Blackstone Treatment Plant. This allows us in the future for better economic development along the Route 20 corridor. The project is well underway. We funded that, I believe, in two years ago, and we anticipate having the project completed by late fall, early spring of 2021. We're a little delayed on the pump station due to manufacturing delays at the pump station that's located at, beat the Biden Trimal Station or Biden Trimal Plant on Lake Street. But the sewer main work is actually well ahead of schedule, and we anticipate that work actually being completed this fall.
Great. So, can you talk a little bit about the details of the various improvements that we'll make in Article 9, Jeff?
Yeah, so-
The different, the different types of programs that we'll undertake in fiscal year '21?
So, the capital improvements that we will be doing in the sewer department is similar to the same ones we have done in the past. They are II or infiltration inflow investigation, which we are in year 10 of our 13-year program. What we will be doing is we'll be doing TV monitoring of the sewer mains within a certain zone and looking for potential leaks, cracks in the pipe, or other forms of infiltration or inflow to those, to the sewer system itself. As I said, this is year 13. We will also be working on the design for years six, seven, eight, and nine, in which we typically do every three years about a million dollars' worth of improvements, which we will fund as part of next year's capital. We will also be doing a, as we typically do, is we are gonna be working on or evaluating several pump stations. Mainly this year, we will look at the Rolfe and Maple Pump Stations, which are two of our largest stations, and we will do an investigation. We're gonna start looking at each station in its entirety from electrical to pumps to everything, and then actually do probably next year, look at upgrading both of those stations completely. We have not done a full rehab of those stations in many, many years, probably since 1995. We are finishing up the design currently now of our final 17 pump stations for our new SCADA, and we will be, the design will be completed this fall, and we will put that out and we will have all of our stations on the modern SCADA system, which is the system that allows the operator to be able to evaluate each of the stations, gets the flow, gets alarms that would be directly to this, to him, and he'll be able to see what the alarm is ahead of time versus getting to the site, evaluating it, and then going back to the garage to get what equipment that he needs. He'll already have that information before he gets there. I think those are the main topics.
Great.
Capital improvements.
Yeah, so I'll just note, also on the plan is to replace a pickup truck. It's a $71,000 investment. So, for Article 9, the total capital improvements for sewer this year is $1,636,900 and consist of those detailed projects that Jeff has gone through. So, walking away from sewer now onto the cleaner side of the house, Dave will talk a little bit about the water operating budget, and if you could just give us an overview of that, how much it is and what's going on within water operations in '21.
Of course, Kevin. Article 10 is for the Water Enterprise. It seeks to raise the amount of $2.5 million, of which the revenue would be generated through the water rates, which were set, are based on our projections from our May 2018 water rate study. So, the entirety of the costs for the operating budget are covered by the fees associated to water use. Year over year, this is a very similar budget as we've seen in the past. Things that we did reduce, you'll see more on the capital side between fiscal projections one and two, but the bottom line is pretty consistent with previous years.
Great. All right, so I'll turn back over to Jeff for Article 11, which is the Water Capital Improvement Plan. Jeff, this is something that we've taken a lot of effort in over the past years to help improve our water quality, whether it was the $14 million new water treatment plant to remove manganese, and we did a special article last fall to look at some emerging contaminants, whether it's PFOS or hex chrome. So, if you wouldn't mind just talking about those ongoing initiatives and then what's new for fiscal year '21, where we're gonna replace mains and do some other things like that.
Thank you. So, in our previous initiatives, we had looked at, we had budgeted money for unidirectional flushing, which we did start last fall, in which we were continuing during the warmer days through this winter. However, with COVID-19, we had to suspend the unidirectional flushing operations. We completed one and a half of our 12 zones. We were highly concentrating on the high-pressure zone, which is the center of town northerly, and we got about, I said, one and a half zones completed. We will start that back up in the fall. We typically, you do not do unidirectional flushing in the summertime as it does use significant amounts of water, and we want to make sure we have adequate water during the high demand of the summer months. So, but we will start that back up again in the fall. Through, we have also, as everyone knows, we have hexavalan chromium and PFOS that has been discovered, which is a, an emerging contaminants, which have been found in our water. We have contracted with a company to start the pilot process for the hexavalan chromium. Unfortunately, again, due to COVID and the company is out of Georgia, they are not able to get here due to quarantine requirements and restrictions on travel. As soon, the equipment is here, it's in the plant, we just have to wait for them to come and set it up, and soon as they are, we are first on their list. They will be here and they will start that piloting process. That process takes 14 weeks to complete. Once we complete the hexavalan chromium pilot testing, we will then go into PFOS testing. We cannot do them concurrently, we must do them separate as they are located, pilot testing apparatus relocated in the exact same location within the plant itself. So, we will do them separate. That company is local, so we will not have restrictions. Reason we cannot do that at this point, we are in the process of getting approval, which we must get from DEP prior to doing the pilot testing on the method, the location, the disposal, et cetera. So, we are getting that approval now, and once we get that, we'll start, commence that as soon as the hexavalan chromium pilot testing is complete. For FY '21 capital investments, we are continuing our water main replacement initiatives in which we are, we try to do between one and a half million dollars' worth of work. And this year, on the design, actually, it's our, we're in the process of getting ready to bid, will be Main Circle, School Street, Dawson, Saybrook, Catalina, and Jenny Street area. We have had significant number of breaks on School Street and also in the vicinity of Main Circle over the last year. And the other section over off Saybrook, which is off of Crescent, has been slated to, for repair for several years now. We are, another capital investment, we'll be looking at upgrading the West Main Street Booster Station. That, all of the components within that station are original from the early 90s. And then we will be replacing a pickup truck, which is 61, which is actually partially being funded by the water and partially being funded by the sewer. And we are gonna replace, or we are gonna purchase valve exercising equipment, which we currently do not have, so that we can aid in the unidirectional flushing process, which in the future, hopefully be able to do that in-house once we've gone through this first round. There's two other capital investments, which are, we're gonna purchase a new riding lawnmower as our existing riding lawnmower for the water department, which does do the maintenance around our tanks, our booster stations, and at the treatment plant is no longer functioning. We are, and there'll be two articles- We are, and there'll be two articles later, which are 24 and 25, which is the purchase of two parcels, which we'll discuss further in the program.
Great. Jeff, why don't we just talk about those for, for a minute, since you brought them up? As you mentioned, Articles 24 and 25, both seek to acquire land off of North Quinsigammon Avenue that has become available. Actually, both sellers had approached the town, the numbers are 268 North Quinsigammon and 274 North Quinsigammon. Why would we want to purchase that land?
So both of those parcels, which are located on the east side of North Quinsigammon Ave, just south of Interstate I-290, they are both located with our Zone 1, which is within 400 feet of our Lambert's Wells 3-2 and 3-1. So, DEP's requirement is that we have the ability to control, own or control, have control over all property within our Zone 1. Those wells were pre-existing prior to that requirement. This gives us a perfect opportunity to purchase those two pieces to secure our Zone 1 protective radius. I want to say, looking at the map, approximately 90 to 95% of both of those parcels are located within our Zone 1. The other portion of those are located within our Zone 2.
So with 268 North Quinsigammon Avenue, not only are we going to purchase the property, but there's a single-family, actually, there's a duplex, or a multifamily property, a home with an apartment on it. We will be seeking enough funding to demolish that. The other property is actually free of any structures. So for Article 24, 268 North Quinsigammon, we're going to seek the use of $245,000 from the Water System Improvement Account. And for 274 North Quinsigammon, it'll be $103,000 from the same account. Article 12 is the operating budget, so I'll turn it back over to Dave for what's going on in stormwater operations for fiscal year 21.
Of course. So fiscal 21 will mark the second year of operations for the town's stormwater utility. The revenues generated are those that were set out in our stormwater management plan. Revenues collected within the first year went well, and they matched very closely to what the plan intended. And as initially laid out, fiscal 21 proposes an increase in expenditures of 251,681 over FY20. And all those expenditures are within the rates that are generated from the stormwater.
Great. So we'll have a total operating budget of $1,456,741. And Jeff, I'll turn it over to you to talk about what capital investments we'll make through Article 13.
Thanks, Kevin. So the capital investments that we have listed are only drainage projects, and currently we have not made a decision on which drainage projects we will do for the next, which we would normally would put out in the spring. We typically, what we'll do is we'll actually get feedback from the highways division manager on which areas that he deems to be the most concerning. And we are working on a list that our previous highway superintendent had, that's two and a half pages long, so we're trying to take, take it off the top and work our way down. I would like to talk about the actual expenses that we have in there, and what we, what's included in that expense.
Sure.
Real briefly. That includes our fall street sweeping, which we are mandated to do under our MPDS permit. We also are doing additional catch basin cleanings than we had done in the past. And what we're also doing is, as part of our road improvements, and where we can, it's also doing improvements to our existing catch basin system, which is really outside of, it's a drainage project, but it's not really a drainage project. So we are replacing every catch basin within, that's required to be within a street that we are in the process of repaving, which we are funding it out of that, and then we're looking at other things to be doing. This year, we're start, we are obligated to start our dry weather and wet weather monitoring of all of our outfalls, in which we are currently working on an SOP or standard operating procedure on how to do that and when we are to do that. The wet weather flow, dry weather flows are easy, wet weather flows, we have to do the monitoring when the basin, or the outfall starts to flow 30 minutes after it starts. So it's random of when we will be running around to each one, we just trying to come up with a method of us being able to figure out a way to do it.
So again, stormwater capital improvements will be 250, and the vast majority comes through the $1.5 million operating budget. Okay, so I think that is it for all of our utility, capital investments and operating plans for fiscal year 21, and we'll pause now before we move on to the next segment.
All right. Well, welcome back to the next segment of review of the 2020 Town Meeting Articles. I have with me Bernie Cahill, the Town Planner. We will be discussing Articles 31 through 36 that pertain to zoning articles on the Town Meeting Warrant. And first, we are going to take Articles 31 through 34 really comprehensively. Bernie, this talks a lot about creating a Town Center zoning district, and I know there's been a lot of conversation in the town over the past four or five years related to the Town Center, related to revitalization. So can you talk a little bit about how this started, how it's developed, and what Town Meeting members see today as proposed language related to a Town Center zoning district?
Absolutely. Thank you. The proposal for the Town Center zoning district has its origins going all the way back to the 2016 Shrewsbury Master Plan. So the master plan established several goals for strengthening and preserving Shrewsbury's Town Center in order to, and I'm going to quote directly from the master plan, "to maintain and enhance the character of Shrewsbury's historic Town Center." And to do this, the Shrewsbury Master Plan speaks to some specific tasks that it had and assigned to the planning department to follow through with. One of them is to promote the Town Center as a pedestrian-friendly shopping and service area and a neighborhood gathering place, and also to review the existing zoning bylaw to ensure that future infill is complementary to the compact style of the area that exists today. Within those kind of more general tasks, they had some very specific tasks in mind for the planning department to pursue. So one of those was to conduct a design study and develop a clear vision for the area within the Town Center. To determine the limits of the Town Center was another one. And making recommendations for parking, building design guidelines, streetscape improvements, and wayfinding was another. And finally, one of the tasks was to consider the development of a business association or independent organization that could promote the Town Center. So that's where the origins of the Town Center came from, and why the planning board, or the planning department, if you will, decided to undertake the review and the promotion of a Town Center zoning district. So from those, I can speak further to, in the ensuing years, of the past four years, the Planning and Economic Development Department has aided in the completion, or helped to complete, the following tasks as required by the master plan. And I'm happy to say, we've actually done most of the ones that were put into the master plan task list. So the first one, in 2018, the town was awarded a grant from the state to conduct a Shrewsbury Town Center Parking Management Plan, together with a consultant, Stantec. This plan looked at and considered the different parking formats we have in town, did parking counts, et cetera, and provided them to the town. In 2018, at about the same time, we helped to establish with some very civic-minded citizens and residents in the Town Center and businesses, the Shrewsbury Town Center Association, which I think everyone will remember, if they do, the December 2019 Yuletide Market, which they helped to organize and manage, and the Town Center Lighting of the Common as well. The Shrewsbury Sound Center, we also received a, or was, or awarded a grant in 2019 to conduct the Shrewsbury Town Center and Beale School Visioning Study. This was done with a consulting firm called Horsley Witten, and the final product was delivered to us last June in 2019, and provided recommendations for how to move forward with a Town Center zoning outline, if we wanted to pursue the Town Center as a village district. Furthermore, we aided the Beale Reuse Committee with their recommendations for the request for proposals to the Board of Selectmen that were issued last summer. And finally, we received another grant from the state to conduct a wayfinding and branding study in the downtown, which was just recently completed and approved by the Selectmen in June of 2020.
Great. So it seems like a lot of planning has gone in over the past few years, a lot of community input, and I think that leads us to the next four articles that are on the Town Meeting Warrant. Can you speak a little bit about why this Town Meeting, excuse me, Town Center zoning package is coming to Town Meeting members in four distinct articles, and why it's not one large article chunked together?
Right, now, that's a great question. So the process to actually create the zoning articles took, took off really last fall and the fall of 2019. This was following the studies that I just mentioned that were completed. And what the planning department did was it took those results from those studies and those recommendations, and started to draft an initial outline. So from that outline, then, it was presented to the Board of Selectmen in the fall of 2019, for their blessing and endorsement to move forward with that. We received that endorsement from the Selectmen, and the, whereas, the issue was put forward, excuse me, it was, the, the planning board then moved forward with two public forums following the meeting with the Board of Selectmen, one in November of 2019 and one in December of 2019, both of which were highly attended by the public. Following that, in January of 2020, the planning department met with the, some stakeholders in the Town Center to review the outline of the draft, just as they had reviewed it with the members of the public at those public forums. Including in those stakeholders were the Shrewsbury Town Center Association and the Historic District Commission. And we were looking to receive feedback from these members, just like we were from the members of the public, to see what their concerns were, what their ideas might be, what their recommendations might be, and to incorporate those ideas, recommendations, and take into account the concerns as we drafted the bylaws. So when we got to four, essentially how we got to four was, through the forums and this feedback sessions, we realized over time, as we were presenting them, that they fell into four distinct categories. The first one being definitions and uses for one article, using essentially Section 2, if you will, of the bylaws, which is the definition section and the use table. We saw how those were going together, and when we spoke about one, we spoke about the other. The second one was, when we were talking about the zoning bylaws, we realized that we had to explain a lot of times to the public and to members of Town Staff, how this new Town Center was going to fit into current processes and requirements in the zoning bylaw. So that became the second article, is how do we integrate the Town Zoning, the Town Center zoning into existing bylaws, to make it work, to make them function together? The third one is actually, the third article is the Town Center District itself. And then this area, we're going to have, and we propose to have, the items that make the Town Center zoning district distinct from the other zoning areas in Town zoning districts. So these are things like, and I'm going to talk about these in a little more detail, but things like design elements and requirements, traffic, I'm sorry, not traffic, parking standards, and those types of things that are unique to the Town Center. And then finally, the fourth and final article is, of course, the boundaries for the zoning district. Is it going to be the same as what the limited business was, or was it going to be different? So these were the four distinct discussions we found ourselves having over and over again with members of the public and stakeholders. So, to the best of our knowledge, we decided to go, rather than change that, we decided, let's go with this, because these are the areas we're discussing anyways. So we put forth four articles that really need to be taken together to create what we're looking at creating, which is the Town Center zoning district. You couldn't have one without the other. They, they go together.
Great. Thank you for that explanation. So, for those who are not familiar with zoning bylaws or zoning articles, so Town Meeting has to approve a zoning article, it's a two-thirds vote that needs to pass, and this really lays out how land use is used, so we're kind of backing way up. For those members of Town Meeting who haven't voted on zoning articles or bylaws, I definitely recommend you to refer to some of the studies that Mr. Cahill has presented today, and get up to speed on why we're doing this, and kind of the look and the feel that we're going to be getting. You'll see in your Town Meeting booklets that you're going to get, the zoning language is, might be a little heavy for those who aren't familiar with zoning language, but Mr. Cahill and the planning board have really worked to use some photographs and other things to get you to feel what this Town Center might look like if there is a revitalization occurring. So, why don't we move forward, and if you could just briefly describe what each article does, and how that will allow for the revitalization of the Town Center, that would be great.
Yeah, happy to. So, Article 31. So when we establish a new zoning district in town, as we do for any new zoning district, as we're proposing to do here with this one, various parts of the zoning bylaw, bylaw, need to be amended, right, to integrate the particular and, the particular aspects of that new zoning district. So for Article 31, this means taking those new uses that I discussed earlier, and that are tailored specifically for the Town Center, and putting them into the use table, and then assigning them whether they are a use that is allowed by right, which means it might require a site plan approval by the planning board, or by special permit, or not allowed at all. And we had to do this across the board for all the different zoning districts, but specifically for the Town Center zoning district. So we have some new uses, and I'll just give you some examples, where we had an idea for a new use, and this one was very popular, was the idea of a microbrewery of some kind. Well, we didn't have microbrewery in the definition section of the zoning bylaw, or in the use table. So first, we came up with the brewery definition, which we use from, gathering from many different towns who already have this as a, as a use, existing use. And then we, once that was done, we put it in the use table, and then went through the zoning districts for where it was allowed and where it was not, making it an allowable use in the Town Center zoning district. So that is one example. And again, to stress the point, the board, if the Town Meeting members would like to see the entire list, they can go on the website, and we have all of the articles in full on the website, they just have to click on them, they're PDFs, they can read them, and they can see all the uses that are being proposed, and all the definitions. So that was Article Number One, which again, was Article 31, excuse me, which was the definitions and the use table. So moving on from there, for Article 32, this was, as I mentioned earlier as well, the proposed criteria for the Town Center, and how they were incorporated into the existing criteria of the zoning bylaw, for things like site plan review, signage, lighting, and parking, things that already exist in the town, but for the Town Center District is going to be somewhat unique. So, for example, in Article 32, we proposed that any vertical or horizontal mixed use that's proposed is going to have a site plan review by the planning board for it. So this is right up there with other things, like any marijuana establishment across town, it triggers site plan approval. For any commercial development with 10,000 square foot of space that they're proposing, triggers a site plan approval. The same would be for vertical and horizontal developments, mixed-use developments in the Town Center.
Can you explain a little bit, vertical and horizontal mixed use, for those who might not know what that means?
Sure. So a vertical mixed use is one where you have multiple stories of a building, again, within the limits that are going to be allowed within the Town Center zoning district, which is 35 and a half square, not square feet, feet of height, or two and a half stories, and, and up to three stories with a special permit. So a vertical mixed use, again, it's a multi-story building with multiple uses in it. So the first floor may be retail or commercial, the second floor could be retail, another retail or commercial business, it could also be a residential unit. So it depends on what mix the developer's looking for, but a mixed use is exactly as it sounds. It's a mix of various different uses that you wouldn't have on a traditional single lot these days. Horizontal is the same thing, except for you're not necessarily stacking floors on top of each other, you're thinking on the horizontal plane left to right, where you might have a use along a main street, such as like a retail use, but you might have, say, a few townhouses in the back. Or maybe you'll have a retail and a commerce, in the front, and a commercial, more office business in the back. But you're using it on the same lot. So those, that's the difference, and that's a really good question. So for Article 32, right, so when we get to a part in one of our existing criteria for something like, say, parking, or lighting, or signage, where the Town Center District is going to deviate from what's existing there, there's now a reference to look at the Town Center subsection, which is what Article 33 is all about, which is establishing the subsection for the Town Center District, and its own unique criteria. So sometimes they will overlap, and sometimes they will be the same, these criteria, but in other circumstances, you'll have to defer to the new subsection to see what is allowed for signage and lighting and so forth. Which brings us to Article 33. So as I mentioned, Article 33 would establish a standalone Town Center subsection. And this subsection, I think the most important thing it does at the very beginning is establishes, to anyone reading it, the overall vision that the town's putting forth for the Town Center. We're talking about a traditional New England village center, as we see throughout the New England states, right? Two, three-story buildings, mixes of uses, broad sidewalks and the like. Two, three-story buildings, mixes of uses, broad sidewalks and the like. But it also does more than that. It also provides the criteria that the Planning Board would use when evaluating proposed developments. And this isn't helpful just for the Planning Board, but for the public as well, as well as developers. And this, and then further on down, so that's how the Article 33 starts, this subsection. Now, this is followed by, as I mentioned before as well, that the specific standards and requirements that need to be met for developments in the town center zoning district. So, that includes things, dimensional standards, right, for lot coverage, for height, for things like setbacks, as well as standards for things such as building design and architecture, parking in pedestrian areas, lighting and signage, and landscaping. And as Kristin mentioned earlier, the town, the Planning Board, our department, took the effort to put in additional images, something that has become more common in planning practice, to demonstrate to people who may not be familiar with certain technical terms, you can see what it is that the town is looking for, for whichever subsection you're at for the criteria for parking or lighting or what have you. Article 34, then, is of course the final article that deals with the town center, and this is the map showing the boundaries, the proposed boundaries for the town center district. Now, many of you will notice, while the new zoning district replaces the limited business district, it is actually going to be, as proposed, slightly different. For one, it would not cut through, the zoning line for the town center district would no longer cut through certain properties. Right now, it cuts through properties, which creates confusion for landowners, homeowners, developers, and the like. So, the new zoning district boundaries would follow strictly lot lines only. It would not cut through lots. Secondly, it's proposed to be extended eastward along Main Street. And primarily, the reason we did this, and this goes back to the very beginning, talking about the master plan, about establishing the town center district culturally and economically and socially. And what we found when we did our research is that, to the east of the intersection of Route 140 and Main Street, is that there's a lot of mixed use, uses already going on on the existing lots there today, even though they're in a residential district. So, we have mixed uses, we have doctor's offices, we have a mix of commercial and residential already along the eastern part of that section. So, that is the proposal for that. And you can view the map also online, Article 34, on the, either the Planning Department website or the Planning Board website. We have both of those articles, all four of the articles, if you will, up and available for anyone to read.
Great, and those will be specifically located in the town meeting packets as well and the book.
As well.
So, I know the Planning Board has been debating these articles for quite some time in a public hearing setting. When did that start? When did the public hearings start for the Planning Board related to the town center zoning?
Yeah, great question. So, we started initially in March. We had a public meeting where we went through almost line by line, the entire zoning bylaw, as proposed, for the Board members to provide feedback and hear the whole picture of it. From there on out, since April, May, June, and July's meeting, the Planning Board has been reviewing the articles, all of the articles, including the town center articles during its meetings. We've also left it open and let it be known at each meeting that members of the public could provide feedback at any time by calling us, emailing us, or what have you, anything remote to get in touch with us. We've also are going to be presenting to the Finance Committee for their recommendation and the Board of Selectmen, and the Planning Board will be providing their recommendation on August 6th at their next town meeting, excuse me, regularly scheduled meeting prior to town meeting.
Great, so I know that you provided a lot of PowerPoint presentations at the Planning Board public hearings, so those town meeting members who might want to get a little bit more in-depth with this should certainly review those on SMC. Those are certainly available, and you'll be giving a PowerPoint presentation tomorrow night to the Finance Committee, then, and of course, we have those exhibits on the website. So, thank you very much. Just a few more questions related to the town center zoning before we move on to the two other zoning articles on the warrant. Another article on the town meeting warrant is the disposition of land for the Beal School at 1 through 7 Maple Avenue. How does this town center zoning provide development opportunities for that site for someone who might want to bid on that property for sale?
Right, I know this is a very important question for residents of town, and I want to make it very clear that what's happening at the Beal School and the Beal request for proposal is completely complementary to what this zoning bylaw is. In fact, as they both, they both progressed forward together since last summer. So, they've been, we've been working together, we've been communicating together with the Beal Reuse Committee, with the Planning Board, and with the Planning Department about what the needs are going to be for this site and what the desires are for the town. So, keeping that in mind, I think what this new zoning would do is, I think, first and foremost, as I mentioned earlier, is it provides the potential developers, or people responding to the RFP, what the community's vision for the town center, as it does for everyone looking to develop in any spot of the town center. The new zoning establishes the parameters for how the land at Beal could be used and the process that would need to be followed, and the criteria for things like parking and design that would need to be met. And as I mentioned, this is currently the subject of, or will be shortly in the near future, the subject of a request for proposals from developers looking at this site. And taking that into account, what we did when we designed these town center zoning bylaws is we provided for some wiggle room, if you will, in the bylaw for such things, and a great example is for things like setbacks. So, right now, if you look at the dimensions for the setbacks that are allowed, you'll see that the front yard setback is zero feet, no front setback, up to 10 feet. However, that was too strict for the Beal Reuse Committee, and I agreed with them. So, what we did is we actually put in a requirement, or an allowance, I should say, for anything over 10 feet as a setback would require a special permit from the town, from the Planning Board to proceed. Again, this would provide Beal with more wiggle room, depending on what would come forward from a developer, what kind of proposal. I think it's worth also noting, finally, that zoning could be further amended, as it always can be. It's certainly nothing that's permanent forever, and it doesn't need to be. So, we could always amend it to accommodate a proposal that the town and the public really support at the Beal site. This has been done at other sites, most recently Lakeway Commons and Market Basket, where a proposal was brought forth by a developer, it had immense support from the town, so we amended it slightly, the zoning bylaws as they exist today, to accommodate what was being proposed. And I think that would work at the town for the Beal reuse as well. But I think overall, it's, like I said, it sets the parameters, it sets some dimensions and kind of the four corners that the Beal School would, hopefully, the proposal, the developers would see this town center zoning and understand what it is, the goals overall that the town's striving for.
Great. So, we have, we may have some property owners or landowners who are saying to themselves, I'm really nervous about this new zoning going into place, do I have to bring my property into compliance right away? I don't meet the setback requirements, or I have a drive-through and drive-throughs aren't allowed, or it's requiring this type of sign for my business, and I don't have that type of sign, do I have to go spend a lot of money? So, can you put people at ease of what this process is and how it relates to existing development versus proposed development?
Right, and I understand those concerns, but the short answer is, is no, that they would not need to bring their buildings or their lots into conformity. Certainly not if they're going to continue the use that's existed there for many years prior to the zoning being adopted. So, it's not going to force anyone to comply, but it would impact the new development in town centers. So, if someone were to tear down an existing building to decide to come back with something new, then they would have to bring it up to the standards of the new town center district. And I think really, overall, what it is doing is not so much restricting of what they can continue doing, what they've done before, but they provides these landowners or future landowners, as it might be in the years ahead of us, decades ahead, with new, right, with new and creative opportunities for developing their land that they didn't have at their disposal before, that they weren't allowed to do. So, someone who's there now might decide, if they decide they want to continue business as usual, that doesn't need to change. Certainly, the gas stations, no one needs to go away, Dunkin' Donuts, no one needs to be afraid they can't get their coffee, it will be there. However, if someone in the future were to buy one of those lots, were to decide they wanted to do something different, they would then have more opportunities, that have more choices at their disposal than just the few that we have today.
So, this zoning language really provides for a transformation opportunity over time as development projects emerge.
Right, so zoning is best understood as laying the framework for a future development. So, the town can change zoning how it sees fit, but right, it still requires, you know, landowner to take their own initiative, imaginative developers, financiers, skilled architects and builders and the like, to actually want to come up with an idea that would meet what it is that the town's looking for. So, the town doesn't make development happen. We can incentivize it to a degree, we can make it easier, and we can establish our own goals for the town, but at the end of the day, it will be up to developers and landowners to, on their own, put these pieces into place and come forward to us with development proposals and ideas.
Great, well, thank you so much for the summaries of Articles 31 through 34. This has been accumulation of many, many years of work, input from many citizens, business owners, and we urge town meeting members who may not be familiar with the process that there are a lot of resources on the Planning Department, Planning Board, and town meeting websites to bring you up to speed in order to be prepared to vote on these zoning articles on August 8th. With that, Mr. Cahill, I'd like to turn to Article 35. So, a few years back, the town of Shrewsbury adopted several zoning articles related to retail marijuana cultivation of marijuana and such and so forth. Can you talk a little bit about what Article 35 is and how it relates to that zoning bylaw that we put in place several years ago?
Yes, so, a couple of years ago, the town at Special Town Meeting adopted regulations for marijuana establishments in town, and certain different uses under the rubric of, or under the umbrella of marijuana established were assigned different zoning districts where they were allowed. Marijuana cultivator and craft marijuana cultivator cooperative are among the most restrictive in terms of where they can set up shop. By allowing marijuana, so right now, by allowing marijuana cultivator and craft marijuana cultivator cooperatives to operate in the limited industrial district, as this article intends to do, of course, by special permit, as it always has been, it would actually mirror the current zoning that we already have for independent testing laboratories and marijuana product manufacturers. So, essentially, the limited industrial district, and again, you can see this online on our website, the actual map, it's mostly along the Route 20, heavily industrialized corridor anyway. And again, it's already where marijuana product manufacturers and laboratories can set up shop as it is. So, currently, again, the plan is, and again, these are two allowed uses already, I just want to make that clear, what this would do would just add one more zoning district where it would be allowed overall. And I, we're reacting really to the questions and calls that we're getting, to the town manager's office and to the Planning Department's office, looking at these sites for this type of use. And we're unable at the moment to say, yes, you can set up shop there under a special permit. If this were to pass, they would be allowed then, under a special permit, to proceed.
Great, thank you, that's a very good summary. And just for the public, these types of uses still would be required to go to the Cannabis Control Commission for those necessary state permits. This is strictly for land use to allow for marijuana cultivation and craft marijuana cultivator companies and cooperatives to be located in the limited industrial district where we currently had not allowed them before.
Correct, yes.
Great, so, the final zoning article we'll touch upon is Article 36, which was brought to the Selectmen by a developer and a new landowner of Worcester Sand and Gravel and their surrounding properties. It's looking to amend the zoning map. Could you speak a little bit to this? I know that the landowner's representative will be speaking to this, to the Finance Committee tomorrow night and at town meeting, but as you've been present for the Planning Board public hearings, if you could just give a quick synopsis of what this article means.
Right, well, first, I'd like to say, as with the other zoning articles, town meeting members can view the maps and the language for this article online on our website, the Planning Department website, or the Planning Board website. So, in the last year, in the last, actually, six months, the ownership of the Worcester Sand and Gravel site had changed hands, as well as some affiliated or co-owned properties and parcels in the immediate vicinity of the Worcester Sand and Gravel area. These new owners approached us and said that they were interested in changing the zoning from commercial business, as it is today, to limited industrial, to provide them with options that they see are more fiscally viable to them and would provide benefits to the town, rather than leaving it vacant. What they're seeing in terms of what they've told the town and have told the Planning and Economic Development Department is that the opportunities they're seeing for growth, for development and investment, are those uses more in the limited industrial zoning district than what they're finding in the commercial business zoning district. So, this change would allow for those, the opportunities that the limited industrial district would provide to them, the uses that aren't necessarily allowed in the commercial business district. And town meeting members can absolutely see that map, we have two really good maps on there, online, showing the existing zoning that is today with commercial business and what it would look like if Article 36 was approved.
Great, thank you. Again, thank you so much for the comprehensive discussion related to the zoning articles on the town meeting warrant. For any town meeting members who have questions between now and August 8th, please feel free to reach out to Mr. Cahill. He's certainly happy to answer your questions via phone or email. And again, all of those documents are very readily accessible. If anybody needs it in a different format or whatnot, we're happy to help through the Planning and Economic Development Department. So, thank you so much for your time today and the presentation of these articles, and looking forward to seeing you at town meeting to answer any questions that might happen on the floor.
Likewise, I'll see all of you there.
Thank you, so this wraps up our segment on the zoning articles, so thank you very much.
All right, so now, we'll turn to the final segment of our prerecorded presentations for the annual town meeting, which will occur on August 8th, Saturday morning at 8:30. And we just have a few different varieties of articles that remain to get through, and we're going to start with Article 22.
Great, so thank you, Kevin. Just wanted to note that Article 22 is to authorize a memorandum of understanding with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts related to foster care reimbursement, and this is a new article on the town meeting warrant for this year. Could you just give a short description, Kevin, of how this was, came about on the warrant?
Sure, so we need the legislative body, town meetings authorization, to sign this agreement with the Commonwealth, and what it really does is, it opens up a new revenue source for the town to allow the state to reimburse us for the town's part in transporting foster care students attending Shrewsbury Public Schools. So, it's, it's not a significant revenue source, a couple thousand dollars a year, but nonetheless, the town should take advantage of that since we have the opportunity to do so. So, that's Article 22. Switching gears a little bit, we'll move over to a bylaw amendment, which is Article 29. And this is the amendment of the Personnel Bylaw. Folks will remember, normally, the Personnel Board comes in in one of the first two articles traditionally at town meeting, but this is Article 29. So, would, Kristin, would you mind explaining a little bit about the changes that are proposed for the Personnel Bylaw?
Sure, thank you. At last year's annual town meeting, the Personnel Board presented that the town of Shrewsbury had prepared and gone through a classification and compensation study to remove the compensation from a grade and step-based approach to a compensation and performance-based approach and, from the longevity-based approach. And at that point, we had done some minor touch-ups to the Personnel Bylaw related to that. No longer do, does town meeting have to approve specific positions within the town of Shrewsbury or specific pay ranges. However, over the past year, the Personnel Board and town staff has gone through the Personnel Bylaw to really clean it up. We've removed the relation to longevity-based compensation, we have changed the language adjustment, noting he and she to they, to be more consistent, and we made other administrative changes that apply to unionized employees in that sense. So, you'll see in your town meeting packet that we actually have the entire Personnel Bylaw laid out in the packet because the changes are comprehensive throughout, related back to that new classification and compensation study and that pay range that was established and the grade range that was established.
Great, great.
So, we'll move over to Article 38, which is an article related to regulating the donation containers, which would be a general bylaw. And this has been an ask for some time of some residents, we've all seen them in town kind of overflowing in a sense, and have a hard time to track those users down. So, Kevin, could you explain a little bit about why we're inserting a donation bin bylaw into our general bylaw?
Sure, so, yeah, I mean, it's really to provide an opportunity for the town to have regulatory oversight over these collection bins. Everyone is familiar, as you've mentioned, it's where you can take your clothes, or books, or whatever it is that's accepted by the bin, and place them into those bin. And they're often located kind of like as an accessory to the primary use of the property, so, and sometimes they're not properly overseen by either the owner of the bin or the property owner. And a lot of times, it's not a common owner between the property and the bin. So, this bylaw establishes a application process to go through the Board of Selectmen, an oversight that would be conducted by the Board of Selectmen. So, first of all, the placement of each one of these bins would have to be approved, and thereafter, if there's cleanliness issues, or, you know, someone's dumping couches and they're just not being cleaned up, or what have you, around these bins, then there's an opportunity for the Board to take action, including an opportunity for the board to take action, including fines, the Board of Selectmen to take action, including fines, to help ensure the cleanliness and desirability of the community. So it is a general bylaw, and will be overseen by the Board of Selectmen.
Great. Stepping back just one item, Article 37 deals with the required sprinklers in boarding houses. This was brought to our attention by the Building Inspector and the Fire Chief. It's a mass general law that the town of Shrewsbury had not adopted in the past, and we feel that would be important. And this is on the warrant for the adoption of the mass general law to require sprinklers in boarding houses.
Great. And what would a boarding house be?
So it's really a structure where people can come and live in congregate-type settings. Our zoning bylaw defines boarding house pretty specifically.
All right. So this is just providing public safety in those houses?
It is. It's requiring those sprinklers for public safety, which we're seeing is absolute need. And we're one of a few in the Commonwealth who do not have this adoption of this general law.
Great.
So Kevin, can you speak to Article 40? This is our traditional receiving reports of town officers and committees. Clearly, we've continued to meet through virtual networks. There may or may not be some reports by committees and boards at this annual Town Meeting to receive.
Right. So this is traditionally Article 1 on the annual Town Meeting warrant, Article 40 this year. I don't have a specific list if there are any committees that need to report in lieu of that written report in the annual Town Report, but it would be handled through this article if there are any prudent reports that need to be provided.
Great. And usually, the traditional second article on the Town Meeting warrant, which is Article 41 this year, is the Wright &amp; Harlow Charitable Fund.
Right. So that's a requirement that was established, though, when the charitable fund was established that requires the annual appointment by the town to establish trustees. And there's normally a relation to the Wright &amp; Harlow families for these trustees, and this year is no different, and we'll be identifying those individuals who are the trustees of that account. And there's roughly about $5,000 in that account that the town is the fiduciary of. So I think that now takes us over to something that's rather related to the town center district, and another significant project going on in town, which is the construction of the new Beale Elementary School. But Article 23 is for the disposal of town-owned land at 1 through Maple, 1 through Maple, 1 through 7 Maple Avenue, the current Beale Early Childhood Center. Kristin, would you mind describing what will happen if this article passes?
Sure. Absolutely. Ever since it was known that the new Beale Elementary School was going to be rebuilt, and specifically rebuilt on 214 Lake Street, the Board of Selectmen formed what was called the Beale Reuse Committee. And they were comprised of town staff, Boarding Commission members, and members of the public to understand what the community would like to see at the new Beale School. And as Mr. Cahill described in Articles 31 through 34, that the town center rezoning goes hand-in-hand with this revitalization of the Beale School. The town of Shrewsbury Board of Selectmen then renamed the Beale Reuse Committee to the Beale RFP Committee, as they've been working very diligently on a request for proposal to put out for developers to respond to. But that RFP will only go out if Article 23 passes. Article 23 is to transfer the town-owned property originally acquired by the town for school purposes to the Board of Selectmen, and authorizes the sale of the property for no less than $1, and authorizes the Board of Selectmen to enter into any agreements necessary to dispose of the property. And this goes hand-in-hand with the request for proposal that has been drafted by the Beale RFP Committee and our consultant over the course of the past six to eight months. So we would be looking for the town to vote favorably upon this if they wish to see the Beale property disposed of for a viable use to revitalize the town center and perhaps bring some funding into the town.
Now, I know one of the considerations in reusing the Beale, the building on that site for the Beale School was the 15 to 20 million, I can't put my mind on it right now, a million-dollar investment to bring it up, to just bring it up to code. So can you talk a little bit about why the dollar threshold for the sale of the property and the difference between, you know, maybe the cash part of the transaction and the value to the town?
Sure. So as many people know, the building was built in the 1920s, obviously has been upgraded several times to accommodate an elementary school. But the cost to upgrade this type of building for any other use other than a school, such as office, residential, commercial, would require some substantial upgrades. Conversely, if the building were to be torn down, that would be another significant cost to the developer. And the Board of Selectmen and the Beale Reuse Committee have had these conversations over the past year or so, that they don't necessarily need to get top dollar for the property. What their main goal is to bring a use to the property that would revitalize the town center, would be a community asset and would really strengthen that area of town and be a great value for all the townspeople of Shrewsbury. So not necessarily looking for, again, the top dollar for that property, but allowing for a development to come forward with those constraints known of either redevelopment or a teardown of the building.
Right. So the, one way to put it is, rather than for the town to receive a significant cash payment, we'll get to see something closer to our vision for the property, you know, that value versus a cash value.
Exactly. And hopefully see a progressive value over time of revitalization of the town center, which may bring higher tax income as well.
That's true. Right. Because we're not getting any tax income for that at this point.
Correct.
Great. All right.
So the next article also deals with land, but deals with Selco purchasing several parcels of the land. It's Article 26 on the Town Meeting warrant. So Kevin, I know you've been working closely with Selco on this matter. Could you explain what the goal of this purchase is?
Sure. So this is a site that's located off of Boston Turnpike, off of Route 9. It contains three parcels, 234 Boston Turnpike, and 2 to 4 Worthington Avenue, and 6 to 8 Worthington Avenue. And these parcels were, are currently owned by National Grid and used as a substation. And they went to Selco to see if Selco is interested in acquiring the properties, and Selco is interested. And since, you know, Selco's an entity of the town, Town Meeting needs to authorize the acquisition of real property. So Selco dollars will be used to purchase these three parcels. It's going to be valued at $250,000, but there's no town appropriation required. Selco does own land and their own substation adjacent to those parcels at 12 through 14 Worthington. So at minimum, it comes under the overarching town umbrella land, kind of valuable location along Route 9. But it also presents the opportunity for Selco to expand their substation if needed in the future. So a lot of opportunities, but just good to get it under the ownership of the town using Selco funding. So this would approve the authorization for Selco to purchase that land along Route 9. Keeping on the track of different types of land transactions, we'll move to Article 27, the next article, which would be to authorize easements on Lake Street and Hialeer Drive. Now, we mentioned before, Lake Street is the location of the new Beale School, so is it related to that project, Kristin?
This is. At the time, the Town Meeting warrant was signed by the Board of Selectmen, plans were still developing related to certain utilities and infrastructure associated with the Beale School at 214 Lake Street. And it was thought at the time that easements were going to have to be taken for those improvements in the Lake Street area and the Hialeer Drive area. Subsequently, since design has progressed, these easements are no longer necessary. So we'll actually be asking Town Meeting to defeat this article, as, again, those easements are not necessary for the project now that design has further come down.
Great. I think the last article in the bucket of land acquisition or disposal is a traditional sounding article, but always unique to the year, which is lay out and make public certain private streets. So what, what streets are in play this year, Kristin, and where does the Engineering Department stand on their view for these?
Sure. So for several years now, development has been constructed off of Lake Street, off of Nelson Point Road, and the new subdivision road, Point Road. The developer has completed the improvements on a portion of Nelson Point Road and Point Road to bring them up to subdivision standards, and now they are ready to be accepted as public ways through the Town Meeting process. So exhibits can be found in your Town Meeting packet when you get that, and on file with the Town Clerk's Office. So again, we'd be looking for Town Meeting to accept a portion of Nelson Point Road and Point Road at this Town Meeting. And again, this is in that area of town where South Quincygan turns to Lake Street, and there's that one-way area of Lake Street. There's several new homes going on in that area. And the Engineering Department and DPW has thoroughly reviewed the plans and thoroughly reviewed the improvements to the ways, and feels that it's set to be approved by Town Meeting for public acceptance.
Great.
All right. So I think that leads us to the last article on the Town Meeting warrant that we have not gotten to yet. We do have one citizen petition this year. We will expect them to give their own presentation through SMC and be available at Town Meeting. But Kevin, this is related to adoption of the Community Preservation Act. Are you able to give a comment or two related to this citizen's petition?
Sure. So this is a article for, it's the first of a two-step process if the town were to adopt a community, become a Community Preservation Act community. And it seeks to provide an additional percentage upon the tax rate, so an increase in the tax rate. And funds that are generated through that increase would be earmarked for certain purposes, including open space, affordable housing, recreation, and historic resources. So again, this is a citizen's petition, and I know that the lead petitioners are planning to do their own presentation, both to the Finance Committee at their public hearings, and their own taping of a description of this article. There would be upward pressure on the tax rate based upon their proposal to raise funds for those particular purposes in the future. I think that's all 41 warrant articles that we've made it through in these various segments at this point in time. And just take the opportunity to remind Town Meeting members that although there has been a quorum requirement reduction from 121 to 61, we still encourage everyone to come out if they're able on the morning of August 8th at 8:30 a.m. and participate in Town Meeting. A quorum reduction does not mean that we want to do anything but ensure that Town Meeting can be conducted its entirety, both at the start and continue a quorum throughout the duration. So one, it's a Saturday. Two, it's COVID-19, and the virus is still present with us, so we're just doing everything that we can, but we encourage folks to attend if they're able to do so. We will have very detailed plans, Kristin, that you're working on for the procedures at the start of Town Meeting and to participate in Town Meeting. I don't know if you want to take a couple minutes or a couple seconds and talk about those, what we know, at least right now.
Sure. Thank you for giving me that opportunity. We've been following COVID-19, obviously, since March. We've been filing specific policies and procedures with our staff and all town buildings to ensure safety of all. And in your Town Meeting packets, we will have a specific sheet that outlines all of the safety precautions that we'll be taking at Town Meeting. We will be requiring all that, those who are able to wear masks throughout the duration of the meeting. We'll have specific separate check-in tables to ensure social distancing. We have a tent set up, so it's an open-air environment rather than an auditorium environment. And seats will be located six feet apart, again, to ensure social distancing. We will have hand sanitizer on hand, bottled water available for those who need it. We would recommend that those people bring their own water, drinks, snacks that actually need it. Public restrooms will be available at the Oak Middle School, as we will be outside. And we just ask everyone to continue to be as diligent as they have been to keep the spread as low as possible to ensure that we can continue operations, and we appreciate everyone's cooperation with this. But the town is certainly taking these protocols and procedures very seriously, and we want to conduct a very safe business meeting on Saturday, August 8th.
Great. Well, I think that wraps up all of our segments for today. We hope to see Town Meeting members and any interested members of the public, again, Saturday morning, August 8th at 8:30 a.m. at the front of the Oak Middle School. Thank you for your attention. We'll see you there.
Thank you, everyone.